Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, May 7, 2025 regular session of the NAGC head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Welcome to everyone. And if you will please first join me in a few moments of silence. Now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions and we have a new employee and Brittany will introduce her.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Please join me in welcoming our new deputy town clerk, Katie Anzalone. Katie comes to us from Maryland where she received her bachelor's degree in psychology with a minor in political science. For the last seven and a half years, she worked as a new patient and VIP scheduler for Shady Grove Fertility. The last three of those was remotely when she decided to move to Dare County. Katie lives in Kittle Hills with her two-year-old son, Henry, and they enjoy our local parks, but especially Doughty. And Katie's present has made the West Wing, her presence has made the West Wing complete. So welcome, Katie. And Katie's present has made the West Wing, her presence has made the West Wing complete, so welcome, Katie.
That brings us to a presentation on the Administrative Officers' Management Program, and Perry.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First time I've been up here with the new microphone, didn't realize how big it was. I'm here before you today to recognize Lieutenant Stephen Anderson for his recent accomplishment. On April the 10th, I had the honor of attending the graduation ceremony of the 101st session of the Administrative Officers' Management Program in Raleigh. Lieutenant Anderson was one of 26 officers from North Carolina that completed this program. The Administrative Officers' Management Program is a unique educational program for law enforcement professionals and is widely recognized as one of the leading long-term management schools in the country. Three times a year, during the spring, summer, and fall semesters, a class of up to 30 participants live in the dorm residencies at the North Carolina Highway Patrol Training Academy for an intensive 12-week academic program during which they earn 15 college credits at NC State University. Topics include ethical leadership, personnel law, applied research, complex decision-making, and public management. Pictures on the screen to the left are the 101st session of AUMP of the 26 officers from across the state, and the second picture on the right is Lieutenant Anderson with Chief John Thompson of the Greensburg Police Department, who was the guest speaker. And as happy and as excited as Stephen was to finish this course and be home, I can attest that his wife and daughter were probably even more excited than he was being going through it myself. Stephen, congratulations on your accomplishment, and we look forward to many of your leadership.
Thank you to Stephen and his family for the investment of time and for improving Air Force. That brings us next to a proclamation for National Police Officers Week. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We're here for a proclamation that you'll be reading here in a second. We thank you for recognizing this week each year. Police Week is very important to us here at Nagshead. Not only do we honor all the officers throughout this country that have given the ultimate sacrifice to the service of their towns and communities, it's particularly meaningful to us with Police Officers Memorial Day actually being on the 15th. That was the day that Sergeant Earl Murray with the Nagshead Police Department was killed in a tragic accident while responding to a burglary in progress at 1:30 in the morning. Sergeant Murray was a veteran law enforcement officer. He had over 26 years of experience, and he loved being a cop and truly believed in the age-old code of due unto others as you would have them do unto you. Sergeant Murray left behind his wife, Kim, and his two daughters, Sammy Jo and Paige. The town of Nagshead lost a dedicated and generous police officer, and its family lost a loving father and a husband, but we all lost a true friend. Each year, we send officers to Washington, DC for the National Memorial and the North Carolina Services to show our continued support to the Murray family and for the ultimate sacrifice that Sergeant Murray gave while serving the town of Nagshead. Ask each of you to keep the Murray family in your thoughts and remember them in your prayers at the anniversary of his untimely death of course.
Thank you very much, Chief. We received a lovely letter from Sergeant Murray's widow, Kim, last week, week or two weeks ago, and she expressed her gratitude for Perry and all of our officers in the way that we continue to remember Earl here in the town of Nagshead, and we promised that we will never forget him. If you'll indulge me, I will read this proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Nagshead Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents and visitors of the town of Nagshead. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Nagshead Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. And whereas, let us, each of us, take the time to reflect on the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Earl Murray Jr. made for the town of Nagshead on May 15th, 2009, and the rest of the officers who have done so nationwide, and let each of us keep their family, friends, and all fellow officers in our thoughts and prayers. Now, therefore, the Nagshead Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of the town of Nagshead and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as Police Week and call upon all citizens of Nagshead to observe the 15th day of May, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This is the 7th day of May, 2025. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Perry, and thank all of your officers for the work that they do. Thank you very much. That brings us to a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Nancy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year's theme for Public Works Week is People, Purpose, and Presence. These are just three of the things that motivate us to serve our community. With or without fanfare, Public Works is ever-present, working in the background to serve the residents and visitors of the town of Nagshead. I would like to recognize and thank each superintendent and their divisions for all they do daily for our town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. You know, a big part of what a community does for its citizens is public safety. We just heard about what the officers do, but what, you know, safe drinking water, safe streets, you know, safe sidewalks, safe buildings to be in are also a vital public service, and we appreciate everything that you and your staff do. Thank you. I will read the proclamation for National Public Works Week, People, Purpose, and Presence. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Nagshead. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our town's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Nagshead to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nagshead Board of Commissioners do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and further extends its appreciation to our Public Services Department for the vital services they perform. We encourage all citizens to thank and celebrate our public service employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life, and for making Nagshead a great place to live, work, and visit, this being the 7th day of May, 2025. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. What else?
And yes, sir, I'd like to invite the board and the town staff and the public to our open house on May 20th. From 9:00 to 12:00, we have a new facility. We'd like to share it with everyone.
Yes, ma'am, and we're very proud of it, and we're excited. I do, I join you in encouraging the public to come see. It's a significant investment, and I think the public, our public, would certainly be very impressed. Thank you. Thank you, guys. That brings us next to public comment, and I will turn this, wait before that, I want to recognize Bob Mower, former Mayor Bob Mower, snuck into the room while we were meeting. Thank you, Bob. Welcome, as always. That brings us to public comment. Mr. Lighty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board welcomes members of the public to provide public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment or discuss with the board matters of interest to them. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment. But anybody who wishes to comment, if you would please go to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board, and I will let you know when your five minutes is just about up.
Good morning, mayors and commissioners.
Good morning.
I would first like everyone to notice the beautiful painting. I just noticed us sitting down this beautiful painting behind me. And take note that there are no beach chairs or benches or anything on that beach. It is a gorgeous beach.
I'm sorry, can you tell us your name?
And it's a gorgeous painting.
Can you tell us your name, please?
My name is Barry Brookway, and I'm a South Nagshead oceanfront homeowner for over 20 years.
Thank you.
I would first like to thank the Nagshead Board of Commissioners for implementing the Dune Management Cost Share Program, as I have been a recipient of the funds several times. Thank you. I consider myself a good steward of the dunes in front of my house. For the first seven years, I did beach pushes and put up sand fencing annually to build up the dune in front of my house. For the last 13 years, since beach nourishment, I have had to relocate sand, put up sand fencing, and plant beach grass. I take this obligation seriously, and I feel remiss if I did not show you what other property owners are doing in South Nagshead. You can see the picture that I presented to the commissioners. Kelly Wyatt, the Director of Planning and Development, kindly pointed out to me that the ordinance stated Section 8.8 in the Town Order and states, "It shall be prohibited for any person to leave unattended equipment, personal property, or debris, including but not limited to beach tents, canopies, umbrellas, awnings chairs, and sporting nets on the ocean beaches of the town between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM." Now, what gets a little technical is what defines ocean beaches. North Carolina GS 7720 states that the landward extent of the ocean beaches include, but is not limited, to the first line of staple natural vegetation, the toe of the frontal dune, and the storm trash line. I believe, and contend, and argue that since beach nourishment, that boundary line should be the static vegetation line, not the vegetation line, which really doesn't exist in the town anymore due to beach nourishment. Kelly believes, she does not, Kelly believes and told me or mentioned this in an email, she does not believe we have the language in our current codes to require the removal of the seeding in the pictures. So what is next for the dunes in Nagshead? Hammocks, 15-foot lifeguard chairs on the dunes, or better yet, playground equipment on tops of the dunes? Is that going to be permitted? Or an ordinance similar to the one in Southern Shores, 34th, that's 55, which is a beach and dune management ordinance? The following activity shall be, in this ordinance in Southern Shores, the following activity shall be considered unlawful within the dune system. Walking or traversing on the dunes outside of an unapproved or approved dune walkover access. So we have an opportunity to hear, I mean, some of these laws that have been written for the town of Nagshead date back as far as 1979. Some of these laws have to be changed, as beach nourishment has affected the dune system. And I can't do that personally. It's really up to you. So thank you for the time, and I appreciate it. I hope we can do something about this, because if we don't, I think you're opening up a can of worms, and then everyone will be able to put permanent chairs along the beaches of Nagshead, which I don't think is going to be appealing. By the way, there is also solar lights in this area, and that affects the sea turtles. So I really just hope we can get something done here in a reasonable amount. Thanks very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brookway. Does anybody else wish to provide public comment? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda, which you have before you with eight items, and a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the planning board and the Planning and Development Director, and Kelly.
Thank you. Good morning, mayors, commissioners. Not a whole lot to go over today. So hopefully it's going to be short and sweet. Quickly, the planning board, mid-May met at their April 15th meeting, there were just really two things that they discussed, and it related to the rezoning of the text amendment that's on your consent agenda today. It's going to be a public hearing next month, which pertains to rezoning the south side of the town hall property from R3 to SPDC Institutional. Part of the property, the town hall property is split zone, so over there, it is SPDC Institutional. But on this side, it's actually R3 Residential. So as we look at implementing the master plan and our fitness facilities and things of that nature, we thought that it would be best to have consistent zoning. So the planning board discussed that. Like I said, that will be a public hearing at your next meeting. They did discuss the Town Strategic Plan Action Item as it relates to the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district, and I did give the planning board a brief report of the legislative tracking, and I know the board and the town manager has been a lot with that over the past month. The planning board's next meeting is May 20th, and we expect that to include consideration of a site plan for this property, for the new fitness facility with the residential above. Board of Adjustment, we had nothing in April, but we do have a Board of Adjustment meeting coming up tomorrow, and that's pertaining to 109 East Lakeside. As far as the Septic Health Advisory Committee, we met recently on April 30th, and I will be giving a brief presentation on the majority of what the committee discussed, which was the division of water infrastructure loan and how that scope should play out, recommendations from staff and the committee, and obviously I'll give this board an update. The Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, the geotechnical work and bathometric data collection that's been completed. We're going to start doing their SAV survey this coming month, and we did send a letter out to all the properties adjoining Soundside Road and Villadins Drive to let them know that that SAV work is going to be taking place mid-May and mid-June. that that SAV work is going to be taking place mid-May or mid-June. Sand relocation, that program, the sand relocation program, no longer has equipment on beach. So sand relocation itself is no longer occurring, but we are still receiving the Dune Management Cost Share requests. We're probably up to about $200,000 in allocation. It's a little less than it has been in years past. You can only partake of that $3,500 on three-year cycle, so we imagine that's why it's a little less this year. But we do still have people submitting, so that's great. Provided a update on our permanent turnaround for the third quarter, and as far as Doughty Park events goes, obviously we're steamrolling right into the summer events, so we'll be having fitness, music, and of course, the farmers market. So there are details on that in this report, as well as on the website. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Do we have questions for Kelly? Great. All right. Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. You're going to stay there and give us an update on the onsite wastewater loan program.
So as I said, the Septic Health Advisory Committee and town staff met April 30th, and the primary discussion of this meeting was drafting the scope for how we're going to disperse and implement the Division of Water Infrastructure $500,000 zero-interest loan. So I've put some slides together. This is similar to a presentation that we provided the Septic Health Advisory Committee. But on this slide, I just want to state that it is a pilot program. We do believe there's some flexibility in how we define the parameters for administering the program. We do have to submit a scope of the program to the Division of Water Infrastructure. We're hoping to have that completed by the end of June, early July, hopefully, so that we can get that to them for their consideration and hopefully their approval. This slide has a lot to do with Air Finance Director and the town manager, Amy Miller. It really goes to the dispersment of the funds. We just wanted to highlight that we do have to have OTC approval before we start implementing. One of the criteria to implement this loan is that any contractors doing work under the loan have to comply with the Davis Bacon requirements with regard to prevailing wage, and we also have to comply with American iron and steel provisions. So we're learning a lot about that now, what that means and the requirements, but the hope is that we can create a streamlined process for any contractors to go through once initially, so that they are pre-qualified as they're moving through administration from that point forward. The Division of Water Infrastructure Loan emphasizes assistance for failing or malfunctioning residential septic systems, but like I said, we do believe we have some flexibility there. So staff and the advisory committee recommend focusing the new zero-interest loan funds from DWI on properties identified as high-risk or vulnerable to septic system failure. We're in the process of developing the criteria to define high-risk and vulnerable for the purposes of the loan. Property owners who do not meet that criteria, once it's developed, they'll still have the ability to apply through our existing low-interest loan. So no one will be turned away. It's just going to be which path they take, whether it's the zero-interest or the low-interest. But all property owners will be able to get support. It's just going to be the zero-interest will be allocated to those with the greatest need. Some criteria for high-risk and vulnerable, this is what we're currently discussing. There's nothing set in stone, but I did want to tell you where we're at in terms of what we're thinking thus far. Is that these loans, this loan would be geared towards properties that are located adjacent to or within a specific distance from water bodies, meaning canals, from water ditches. It includes the Soundfront, canals of the Memorial Streets, where there are torches, the Marshes down in South Nagshead, all of those areas. So essentially, doing a data analysis of all of those properties, but then subtracting some of those properties out. So properties that have had septic system maintenance within the last five years, those would be subtracted out. Our environmental planner, Connor Twitty, and deputy planning director, Joe Costello, have been pulling those records from the Health Department and putting those into GIS, so we're able to look at what's been done over the past five years. Properties that do not have conventional septic systems, we do want to focus this on conventional systems as much as possible, and properties that have previously participated in the town's low-interest loan program to either repair or replace their septic systems. So once we take those properties, track out those elements, then what remains is what we would consider high-risk, and we would have an aggressive and proactive approach to reaching out to those property owners to make sure they know that this zero-interest loan is available to them. Depending on the response that we get, we may have to open up those indicators to include depth of groundwater, age of the tank, or just total lack of maintenance if that's what has happened. The advisory committee also emphasized prioritizing vulnerable populations, such as elderly, disabled, and low-income residents, regardless of whether they are considered high-risk or not. As far as loan amount restrictions, the existing Septic Health program, again, it remains in place. It's a low-interest loan, it's currently capped at $12,000. Moving into the next fiscal year, we would recommend to keep it capped at $12,000, and we've allocated $30,000 in the budget to cover anyone who needs assistance outside of the high-risk areas. We recommend a maximum loan amount of $20,000 under the zero-interest loan program for properties identified as high-risk. We envision that in these cases, there's going to be need for extra money, whether that's importation of fill, things of that nature. In limited cases, the Septic Health Advisory Committee would support extending the zero-interest loan program where someone had a conventional system, but it's been determined to be failing, and the Health Department is going to require an upgrade to LPP or mounted system. And in some of these cases, if you have a mounted system, you're going to need positive drainage, so there might be some bill requirements that the committee would consider allowing this loan to take care of up to the $20,000 cap. We imagine it would run very similar to how the existing program works. They would have to provide us with a permit from Dare County Health Department, estimate from the contractor, who's obviously been pre-qualified under the Davis Bacon requirements, and then we would have their bank draft information. They'll need to be up to date on their town water and taxes, and then we'll complete the loan agreement and provide them with a repayment schedule. And we envision the payback period to be the same, which is five years. Next steps. It's a lot of work. We did not get through it entirely with the Septic Health Advisory Committee. We still need to go back with them with that high-risk criteria, some data, and some mapping to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we plan to meet again towards the end of May to discuss this and just refine the high-risk criteria. Once that's done, we will draft the scope and get it over to DWI, hopefully for their approval. So that's all I have for you today, but happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Any questions? Kelly? What?
Kelly, not off the subject, but in your research, have you found any bottomless tanks in the town?
I have not. I'm pretty certain they're out there, we just haven't come across them yet. Hopefully, as we go through this process, we can...
Identify those?
Yeah.
Former Mayor Muller, I'm sure, could speak to this a lot, but the town went through a process years ago to identify and replace all those bottomless tanks. I don't know, do you feel like we got them all, or?
I have no idea if we got them all, but we got, they were, the number surprised us as to how many were revealed and replaced in some initial round when Tom Clay up started working more about the Septic Health issue back in the dark and in the climate of this
Technically, a cesspool, I think they are considered, and I actually helped a buddy on Soundside Road muck one of those out many, many years ago. I have a, I do have a question, Kelly. This, I mean, this is a significant program, we're very dedicated to it. We have the bandwidth for, I mean, this is, the funds are not costing the town, but we are having to administrate them, and so we have bandwidth in the program for time for folks to do all of the work that's going to be involved?
We do. I believe we do, yeah. We have a great staff in planning. Like I said, Joe's been wonderful in terms of being able to synthesize this data, Connor as well. So it is priority, and we feel very fortunate to have the opportunity, so we will certainly make sure that we're able to administer it.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions, but I really do like the direction you guys are going. I think it's great, and I appreciate all the work that the committee's done, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that prioritization is on point. I think that's going to be important. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to a presentation on the House Elevations/Aququisitions through the HMP, HMGP program, and Joe. Morning, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to give a brief, Roberto, can you hear me okay? Nice. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the Hazard mitigation grant program, specifically on the state centric administrative model, and then looking at the elevation and acquisition grant types. This program was developed by FEMA to basically help properties after a presidential disaster to reduce future losses. There's a couple of project types that are available. Number one is elevating homes above the base flood elevation. Two is acquiring properties within the flood plain and then demolishing them and retaining that land as open space. There's also money available for generators and then public infrastructure projects. Some sort of quick facts about it, it doesn't matter what your income is, there's no sort of income verification for anyone who's been impacted by the disaster. There's currently money in North Carolina under the Hurricane Helene disaster preparation statewide, even though the western part of the state is prioritized. There's also money to, or another fact about the program is that basically if you have a second home or a commercial property, you can qualify. It's not just for primary residences, even though they are prioritized as well to the program. So it would apply for basically town properties through this grant. Now, just to speak a little bit about the state-centric program, it's a program administered by North Carolina Division of Emergency Management. It's really simple opt-in paperwork, it's just kind of a form to go off to have them. And basically, what that does is it allows them to assist with managing the project, procurement, bidding, closing out the project. It's a really great program, it's unique to North Carolina, and it basically helps. I see it as a win-win in that staff doesn't have to provide all of that time and management, and the local government doesn't have to manage funds and reimburse contractors for doing the elevation or for acquiring and demolishing the home, the state does all of that. If staff does assist, we do get reimbursed still, and according to their website, they will send money to, you know, to the staff to assist and reimburse them. All good for a grant. And so, just a little bit on elevation grants, it typically takes four or five years to elevate for projects that you all buy and own. So it's a pretty long time frame, but it's 75% funded by the federal government, and then the state pays the match, so it does come out of the property owner's pocket or the local government's pocket, so it might be worth the wait. Six, and I said, property owners that already requested elevation through this current disaster preparation, and they've communicated that they're counting, they already do the state-centric program, so we've asked them to go ahead and handle all elevation requests through their relationship with the state. I know Indiana, looking, maybe some of the other towns also need their county for this. But they don't do the acquisition because they don't like owning the property, the town boundaries. So the acquisition type properties, which would involve a supplier on the property, they raise out, they report a disaster, and acquire that and demolishing that structure. As far as the process, how it works is we, the property owners submit letters of interest to the county, the county then submits that list to the state, the state submits that list to FEMA, and FEMA approves however many they're going to approve. If we opted to the state-centric program, then the state would basically start with the scope of work and managing this project, eventually acquiring the project, which would be a key restriction, keeping that property as open space, which would benefit our CRS and also basically we sort of get the benefit of it about doing a lot of work. This is completely voluntary program, so property owners have to participate, submit a letter of interest, they can change their mind, go away, it's all closing, so it's not something that's mandatory or forced. We have three, or one property, or the three distinct properties we've got out of the town, potentially acquiring their property. There's sort of three avenues to show that it's got cost benefit, if that's worth doing it. Number one is if it's sort of substantially damaged property or something like that. Number two, if the cost to acquire, demolish, and then close is less than $700, $75,000, that's considered pre-qualified, as long as it's in a special hazard area aboard, so repetitive law property outside of such a special hazard area. Or if it's more than that, it may be more than that, you can submit a whole cost analysis, and then they will look at it, you know, eventually that property is qualified. So recommended actions, basically, I think you can submit a paperwork to participate in the state-centric program, the acquisition grants, and then, you know, consider on a case-by-case basis, acquiring and analyzing properties. And then, happy to answer any questions. I would appreciate the board's vote, and either confirm staff's approach to move forward with the state-centric model or deny. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
So when you say case-by-case, you can accept to do it or not?
I mean, basically, if you can move forward with the state-centric program, you can do the acquisition project, if you think there's value in submitting that letter of interest to the state, and then eventually for approval to FEMA, we can. But if we don't want it, and we don't want to acquire it, or if part of the state don't have to, we don't have to accept every single one to submit forward to the state, we still have that decision-making ability.
There's obviously some criteria for that, and that's a four-to-five-year process, did you say? I think I missed.
Yeah, for elevations, you know, it says it's typically four to five years. I think acquisitions is typically two to three years. I know I'm talking to their county in Part Rover. They, they're doing this, they're looking at it for a vacancy. They just kind of can't get ahead of the acquisitions for some of those homes. But there are sort of less erosion rates than what their experience. And, you know, it could work for a couple of, for use of the static line homes.
I got you, thank you.
If we, thinking of the east of the static line homes and, and others in similar condition, if we had had this program in the past, we would have had candidates where it would have been helpful to possibly get those off the beach.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. So it does sound like a good program. We, we hear the staff recommendations. So let's do this as a, as a formal motion. And this would be a motion to participate through the county within the state centric program.
We're already doing that for elevations. This would be to allow staff to opt into the state centric program for acquisitions.
For acquisitions specifically, yes. Okay, thank you. So I make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Joe, appreciate that. That brings us to new business and committee reports. And I'll start with Commissioner Sanders. Anything to report?
Um, I'd just like to remind everybody about the celebration at Jockeys Ridge, the fifty year celebration that has June filled through eight with a music and a drone show and plenty of activities going on for everybody. And the website is the Friends of Jockeys Ridge Fifty, jockeysridgefifty.com. And you can check it all out and see what's going on. And everything's free to the public, so it's going to be fabulous, so.
Very good, thank you. The Peer Advisory Committee has not met, but is going to meet soon. So nothing, nothing for me to report. I have several things I'll bring up during the, during the mayor's agenda that are unrelated. Commissioner Sears?
The Housing Task Force has met multiple times on the items of locating property as well as finding builders to complete mass building at a lower cost structure. And we've met with different advisors on how they get money from the state. And then on tourism board, it's budget season, so we're in the middle of budget, just like we are here.
Okay, very good, thank you. Really appreciate the work on the Housing Task Force. I think the, you know, on, you know, we'll talk later about House Bill seven sixty-five, but I think, you know, one of the, the fact that the town is participating and you're investing your time in that is one of our answers to, you know, why they shouldn't impose, you know, a statewide standard on us because we are, we are making a good effort. Thank you, so thank you. Commissioner Wambach?
Uh, the government Education Access Channel has not met, but we probably will be soon. And for the Septic Health Committee, Kelly Wyatt gave an excellent update, so.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. That brings us to consideration of appointments and reappointments to boards and committees. We have first the Board of Adjustment. And we have, and I'm not there. We, we, we have two folks whose terms are up and they are both interested in being appointed. They are Judy Burnett and Tina Aderhold.
I'll make the motion to reappoint both.
Thank you, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And thanks to both of them for their continued willingness to, to serve. We also have Arts and Culture Committee. And we are, we are, have been, that committee typically has been seven members, is restricted to nine. We've been working with seven. We are, we are down one at this point. I don't know that the committee cannot continue to, to operate. Probably have done a good bit of their planning for the summer and for, for Doughty Park. We do have, we do have candidates for Arts and Culture. Couple of folks that were added recently. Does, are they known to members of the board?
If, if possible, Mayor, I'd like a little bit more time to look into all candidates.
Okay.
If that's okay with the board.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. I, I need a little more time as well, too. Thank you.
All right, very good. Then we will pass on that for this meeting and come back to that. So if that could be on next month's agenda, please. Thank you. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney, Mr. Lighty.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have is a request for a public, I'm sorry, for a closed session to discuss a recently filed Board of Adjustments' appeal and the Cherry Inc. litigation at the appropriate time.
Okay, all right, very good. We will defer that closed session to the end of the meeting. And we will move to items referred to and presentations from the town manager, and that's Andy. Freshen my coffee.
To make sure he can stay awake through the presentations.
Commissioner Sears? What do you find with this, especially straight bike washing machines?
I see that a lot.
Showers, not, not even, very large race walk systems. Health, like, you know, the great problem, but it's not, certainly not code. There's a lot of that.
Well, the bottomless ones hardly ever fail.
Yeah, they, they haven't been installed in sixty, seventy years. So it's one of those problems that has been developed and I think brought to, to the. I'll tell you about one.
Okay. Okay, Andy, I think we're ready.
All right, thank you. So we are here to present the recommended budget for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll start out by saying thank you to all the staff that put so much hard work into this. Amy Miller, Brooke Norris, Jan Yompe, Bertin, Brittany, all the heads, the departmental staff. It's really a team effort. Also, we'd like to thank the board commissioner for all your contributions to this. We've had three workshops over. And we've got more to go, but we keep coming to the big milestone here. Sitting right behind me is Amy Miller, so I have to sort of feel this tension. Don't screw this up, you know, kind of thing. But, you know, I really do appreciate all, all the very work that you've made, that's worth it, so. So we're here today to present the recommended budget. There is a workshop scheduled on May twenty-first with the board to review the recommended budget. We've already had several workshops to go over sort of pre-budget, budget issues and the CIP and talking about specific topics on health insurance. We will have a public hearing on June eleventh on the budget. And we have, the budget will be on our website today. And there's a link to that on the website. So we'll also have this presentation up there. And we will prepare it to budget in a brief document. That won't be written today, but it will help explain the budget in a very simple, one, two-page format. So this year we had really four main issues driving our budget. Revaluation was the biggest one. We have analyzed our shared revenues. We're seeing some changes and trends there, and so that's, that's an important thing to consider this year. Our health insurance was a big one, and we talked about that at our last workshop. And finally, just general inflation, which is affecting everyone. So I'll start with revaluation. Everybody has, the county conducted a revaluation this year. Property values, as expected, went up significantly. We calculated in NACED to be about fifty-nine percent increase in value. So our total property value in NACED is now over five billion dollars, which is pretty astonishing. Our current tax rate for the town is thirty-three cents per one hundred dollar assessed value. As part of the rebalance process, we are required to calculate a revenue neutral tax rate, which would be the rate that would generate the same amount of money for the town prior to the revaluation. So we've calculated this, this to be twenty point eight four cents per one hundred dollar assessed value. And what we are going to recommend in this budget is twenty-two cents per one hundred dollar assessed value, which is slightly higher than the revenue neutral rate. To go over this in a little bit more detail, I know this is a little bit harder to see. Starting out, we are, so we are recommending a one point one three cent tax increase above the revenue neutral rate. And we calculate that to generate about five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in additional revenue. Breaking this down, so we, we have a townwide tax rate and then we have a townwide beach nourishment tax. And so you add those two together and you get the total of tax rates for the town. Currently, townwide is thirty point five cents and then beach nourishment is two point five cents, coming to thirty-two cents, as I mentioned before. Revenue neutral for the townwide was nineteen point two nine. And for beach nourishment, it was one point five eight, coming to the twenty point eight seven cents. And then the recommended rates, there's some rounding within here, but we're recommending that the townwide rate be twenty point five and the beach nourishment be one point five, coming to twenty-two cents. And so then with the new values, the value of one penny is about five hundred thousand dollars. And prior to this rebalance, the value of a penny was about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Getting down to our Municipal Service District for Beach Nourishment, Municipal Service District's one and two. Those are the ones we had in place for the longest amount of time since we started doing nourishment. And they covered the beach front from Bond Street all the way to the southern town line. For several years, many years, we've been charging fourteen point three cents for those properties. And the revenue neutral rate sort of averages out to be about nine point oh five cents for those properties. It actually is different between one and two, but it was just this in the average. The budget actually has what it is for, for one and two in the figure, and that is on screen. We are recommending rounding that to nine cents per one hundred dollar assessed value. When you calculate the other MSDs, three and four, those are the new ones we created that essentially sort of mirror north, south, one and two. So MSD three covers the same more south geographic extent as one, but it goes all the way back to US one fifty-eight, but includes the oceanfront as well. We have prior a rate of point five cent for that area. And now it's made it to fund the beach nourishment master plan, the studies that we've been doing. The revenue neutral rate for that is point three two cents. And we are recommending just keeping that at point five cents. For, for the area west of twelve forty-three and South NACED, the revenue neutral rate for that was point six cents. It was currently one cent, and we are recommending keeping that at one cent. And those, those are such sort of immaterial, I wouldn't say immaterial, but much, much less significant values, we're recommending keeping those as they are. We have MSD six, which included the area north of Bond Street all the way to northern town line. And when we did the master plan for beach nourishment, we worked short that we would have to eventually nourish that area. So we studied that and that tax rate was implemented to fund the study. Studies, studies have been now completed and, and they've determined that we are not planning to nourish that area. So we're recommending removing that tax altogether. So as I mentioned, shared revenues. This is the graph that you've seen before. The red line is the budgeted number and the blue line is the actual number, so what we actually receive each year. And this graph shows us going back to twenty nineteen, what we receive every year, both, both actual and what we budgeted. So as you can see, going back to twenty nineteen, our shared revenues combined were about six million dollars. So that's substantially less than what we put in there in twenty twenty-one. And then twenty twenty-two, things jumped up significantly to ten million dollars. So it, it was really astonishing what happened. You know, it was hard for us to predict that it would go up so sharply. So there's a pretty large difference between what we budgeted and what we actually received in those early years in COVID. We had several years where significant surpluses in revenue. And we took the initiative to spend that money on things that we needed to catch up from the last ten years of recessionary trends. We were sort of behind on a lot of our equipment and vehicles and maintenance of our buildings and our assets and infrastructure. So the board did take, take the initiative to spend some of that money to replace a lot of our equipment and put it into the infrastructure. Approaching twenty twenty-four, we started to, to get a little bit better at predicting where things were going to level off. In twenty twenty-four, you see those lines at the step there. And so we pretty much budgeted right on target with what we received. And then unfortunately, last year, and the board is already aware of this, we budgeted more than we received. And what we, what we started to see was a decrease in shared revenues. Now, we still had an increase in what we received from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, but this was largely due to the four point two five cent tax increase the board adopted several years ago. And as the board is aware, we, we get more shared revenue when our levy, our percent of our levy goes up relative to the other towns. And so we did still see an increase in shared revenue, but certainly not nearly as, as much as we had budgeted. And so we, we come up with a solution to resolve that. But moving into next year, we're, we're being a little bit more conservative with what we're budgeting. Our shared revenues, we're going to budget about three percent less than we expect to receive in a year. So on the very far right, you see that number of about ten, maybe five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And we're seeing occupancy tax go down more than sales tax. So we sort of settled on reducing the shared revenues about three percent below what we actually expect to receive in the current year. We feel pretty good about that. We've talked to local realty companies. We've talked to the visitor's bureau, the league municipalities, and other folks. And we feel like this is probably something we can achieve. The point of all of this is that the shared revenue trends are something we're going to have to consider moving forward. It's obviously a reduction in revenue, and so it's caused a little bit of downtime for us. But you're covering it. Health insurance is another big consideration. We, we were sort of incited by this back in March, I believe. We have been part of the league municipalities' health benefits trust for years now. I think going back to about twenty twelve. They've been providing our health insurance through their health benefits trust. We were notified in March that they were dissolving that. There are a variety of issues we've heard that led to that. But regardless, the NACED, the town in NACED and four hundred other local governments, including nine thousand members of the state, were all told, you've got to go find other health insurance. So luckily we have a little bit of health insurance broker, Mark Three, which we've had since about twenty seventeen. They, they immediately started looking for solutions for this. We talked about this at the last workshop. The board received a presentation, had a recommendation from them. On top of what was happening with them, we also had a high claim year in twenty twenty-four, much higher than we had in the past few years. When you consider that the health benefits trust was giving the town and a lot of its other members renewals probably less than should have been given. These two factors combined, it's leading to the town having a significant increase in health insurance costs moving forward, about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the recommendation here is that we're going to join a new So the recommendation here is that we're going to join a new pool, which is similar to a self-funded pool, but we'll begin it with other local governments. The good part about this is we'll actually join, we'll be a voting member of the board on this pool, so we'll have a say in these renewals to make sure that the pool remains solid. And the administrator for insurance, who possibly should have been sort of, so large consideration for the current budget. And then last thing I'll say about the income revenue is the inflation we've seen. In 2021, 2022, we started discussing a new public services facility, how we're going to fund that. We developed a capital investment fund, and that was the work of Aiden Miller. And basically, it was a new fund we were going to use to budget all of our major capital expenses, infrastructure projects, anything that we see in our CIP. We tried to estimate what our future expenses would be over about a five-year period, and then we tried to determine the correct number to budget into the CI each year to fund those expenses. A lot of those assumptions are sort of out the window, given the inflation we've seen. And on the screen, as you can see, in 2020, a sanitation truck was about two sixty-five, now it's four hundred thousand dollars. We see vertical construction anywhere from four hundred to five hundred square foot, depending on the project. And at the bottom there, you can see when we built the Bond Street bathhouse in 2016, we paid about four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for that project. We just recently completed the Epstein bathhouse, which was a very similar design to Bond Street, and that project was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that just shows you the level of inflation, and it's not really something that I feel like we should have been able to anticipate when we did that region of CIF. So just going over our budget highlights for the coming year, our general fund budget is about thirty-one million dollars. This is a nine million dollar decrease from FY twenty-five, and a lot of this has to do with less grant money and transfers from the CIF to the general fund. We have several large grants that are currently underway or projects that are getting underway, two large form auto projects where we received about a little bit of five million dollars in grants for, and then extranuclear projects that the board is familiar with. In our budget, we have some of these projects listed in the management's message. Obviously, beach nourishment is a big item moving forward this year. We just submitted permits for our next beach nourishment project. We expect to put that out to bid in the coming fall, and then at that time, we'll make a determination on when to time that project, whether it be the summer of 2006 or the summer of 2007. But right now, we're spending town funds on planning costs for that project, and we did give a grant to help with that, about three hundred thousand dollars. The board completed a campus master plan for town property and properties across the street in the past few months, and the first phase of the campus master plan is going to be in the budget for the coming year. As mentioned earlier, we need to build some additional housing, possibly for lifeguards and also replace the town's fitness facility. We have another long list of projects going on right now over the community care clinic, that's your house, about sixteen, already dressed in sand. We have funding in the vertical pedestrian projects, not only construction but planning for future projects. One being the project adjacent to Jacque's Ridge, if we can figure out a way to work with the state to have some of the sand moved, ideally, we can construct a multi-use path on the west side of one fifty-eight, connecting Sanuside Bridge to Hollowell. Pretty significant year for our IT infrastructure, finally making the move to essentially go off the cloud of all of our IT infrastructure and not replace the servers and equipment we have now. So we will be taking our units, our finance software into the cloud, and no longer self-hosting, and we'll also be leaving our K drive and all of our on-premise storage to the cloud using Amazon Web Services, so there's some money in the budget for those items. And then, as always, a significant item is the sanitation vehicles. We've got a new sanitation truck, knuckle boom truck. Those knuckle boom trucks are getting worn out with all the light ride and pickup, but you know, I think it's very much appreciated by our town residents. And then we have other vehicles and heavy equipment in the budget, and you can see those in the department highlights as you move through your budget sections. For employees, we're budgeting for paying class study. Hillbilly's just completed one. We just want to make sure that we're speeding up all of our competitors, and we hopefully won't have such a significant increase this time, because I feel like we have been doing a pretty good job of keeping up, and we wanted just to test that and make sure that we are. We budgeted a three percent cost of living adjustment. We are covering health insurance at a hundred percent for employees and eighty percent for dependents, that was a change the board made a year ago. We have the promising career progression program in town. We've had those underway for several years. This budget includes a performance-based merit structure and integrated K plan increases, five percent 401K contributions, and they're required to manage, and we're not recommending any decisions for the coming year. As I mentioned before, we have several large grant projects. Some of these are being budgeted in a multi-year capital reserve because they span multiple years. We're doing a storm by a master plan. As I mentioned, the projects in South Nagshead, areas twelve and thirteen, we've got a new project that's in design right now to do a Reichs building near Bond Street, near Nagshead Elementary School, and we would essentially be building a system to pump stormwater under the Bond Street beach access parking lot and reconstruction, reconstructing that parking lot in its entirety. We're also doing some drainage upgrades along the north avenue. All that work is a little bit more than six million dollars in grants we received. Multi-use paths, we're rehabbing the beach road, multi-use path policy, the work going on right now. Eventually, the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we received would get us from Genet's Pier all the way to Curly Street, and then future budgets would consider how to do the remainder from Curly Main Street. We're doing a new walkover at June Street with the camera grant, and we're also doing planning for a new bathhouse, part of the camera, probably backed up with the tourism grant. And finally, over the last year, we did receive a land and water fund grant to place a conservation easel in two hundred and fifty roughly acres behind in Nagshead Woods around the Fresh Pond, and we received a four million grant for that work. Water fund, our water fund budget's four point nine, a little bit more than four point nine million dollars, an increase of sixty-five thousand dollars from the prior fiscal year. We are recommending a five percent water rate increase just to keep up the operating costs and inflation in our CIP. In FY twenty twenty-seven, so next year, we are actually going to look at our water rate structure and how to optimize that, and also that will consider a more comprehensive look at our CIP. We've got some irons in the fire out there right now to hopefully get some funding to help with that, and so I think next year, we'll be in a good position to look at our comprehensive CIP and also our water rate structure. This budget includes a long, longstanding project to convert our chlorine from gas to liquid of A Street and Gulf Street. We are also looking at doing engineering work for the pump station improvements, a boat for those plants. And as Kelly mentioned before, we are going to implement the zero percent interest loan program, and the Sub-Tecal Advisory Committee is recommending increasing our pump out credit from one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars, and so that's been included in the budget. Once again, thanks to all the staff and help with this and the board, and happy to answer your questions.
I'll start over here. Commissioner Lambert?
No questions, just thank you, Andy, and the staff for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders? So could you speak a little bit about what the town is doing to increase revenue, like with the legislative requests that we're pursuing this year for some of our projects, like the water line project? That would be sources of funds that we've not enjoyed in the past?
Well, yes, we have made some appropriations requests to the state to help some of our project work. Probably the number of mine, I think, that we have requested is assistance replacing a lot of our expensive centering lines. And so we'll see how that plays out, but I'm just not saying a whole lot yet because I'm crossing my fingers and, you know, but hopefully that you can get some assistance doing that. You know, we've got a significant amount of AC lines to replace. We think that could be anywhere from five to ten million dollars, and without significant increases in our water rates, it's going to take us a long time to do all of it, and so we're trying to prioritize that.
This is, you know, I'm sorry I didn't prepare you with this question ahead of time, but I know you can answer it. So we've enjoyed, you know, as a town, we provide a very high level of service, I think, to our citizens. And we've been through a period when we've been able to, I remember those meetings when COVID struck, and we sat here and cut a lot of expenditures, and then we were surprised and we were able to add back some of the things that we needed to do. So as a town, you know, we do all the things that we're supposed to do. We do things that we ought to do, and sometimes we do things that we want to do that are improving the quality of life for our citizens. Is there anything in that last category of want to do that we don't see doing in this next budget or two as we take a little bit more cautious approach to this?
Well, you know, I think when you look at the services the town provides, you know, we put a lot of money back into our facilities, public services being the primary item. You know, we've got a master plan that really is a ten to twenty-year plan, in my opinion, and that we look at replacing some of our facilities, primarily the facility being Station Sixteen. And so, you know, those are substantial expenses that we're now here to pay for. And then when you look at things we haven't done in the past that we're doing now, housing for ocean rescue staff is probably the biggest thing that we're looking at now that we haven't had to consider in the past. Between the two projects here and up at the community care clinic, we're sort of splitting this between fitness and housing, but you're talking about three million dollars that we're spending to house our lifeguards that we haven't spent on housing for. And so whether or not there's a continuing trend to do more in the way of housing is a question mark, and it's probably something we'll take up our strategic plan in the coming year. What does the future look like for that? And we are asking the state for legislative assistance to expand our authority, not only for the town, but throughout our county to provide housing for employees. So I would say that would be the number one thing. You know, when you look at major expenses, you know, the town started nourishing the beaches in 2011, I believe. Since the town's inception, you know, we hadn't had to worry about them, those are huge expenses. And then we also spend a lot of money on drainage infrastructure now, a lot of that is a result of development, but also changing environmental conditions. And then extranuclear planning and potentially construction of these projects are things we haven't done in the past. And so I feel like we've gotten into the realm of beyond basic services and the needs and wants, and a lot of those things were pursued grant funding for. The town will really have to prioritize those things to do with just purely town funds, so I think leveraging the grants has really helped us move into areas that we wouldn't normally move into.
Very good. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. Thank you to all the staff. I echo that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. You're going to stay there and talk to us about consideration of a no-cost lease for one oh five West Sea Chase?
Okay, very good. Yes, we recently sold the property of one oh five West Sea Chase to Dare County, that is currently housing the town's fitness facility. They plan to build a EMF station there at some point in the future. Just speaking with them, I believe that that project has probably been pushed back a little bit in their CIP. I believe they're focusing on a public works complex currently. They've had to massage their CIP quite a bit due to inflation. Can hang on to that property to use as our fitness facility until we can complete the building we're planning now, and that would be the hope. So they have allowed us to continue to use that building until they seek to tear it down, and we're appreciative of that. The county manager approached us about having a lease so they could be identified, and so essentially it's a no-cost lease with the county to allow us to continue to use the property until they want to tear it down. They approved it, it's been meeting on Monday, and said they're asking us to approve it as well. We've reviewed it, John and his colleagues have reviewed it, and we feel like it's ready for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Great, thank you. All right, and we will proceed with the Board of Commissioners' agenda while Andy moves back to his seat. I can't remember where I'm supposed to start, so I'll start with Commissioner Lambert. Anything to bring us this morning? Okay. Mr. Sanders?
Based on the public comment, I would like John to look into legality of that property, if possible, on how that can be addressed and advised, advise us later upon that so we can guide the plan, boy.
Will do.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for thinking of that. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Then that brings us to the mayor's agenda, consideration of a resolution recognizing the significance of Jacque's Ridge State Park and honoring its fiftieth anniversary. And I will... And if you will bear with me for just a moment, this is a resolution recognizing the significance of Jacque's Ridge State Park and honoring its fiftieth anniversary celebration. Whereas Jacque's Ridge State Park, established in nineteen seventy-five, is home to the tallest living sand dune system on the east coast and serves as one of North Carolina's most treasured national landmarks. And whereas the preservation of Jacque's Ridge was made possible by the grassroots efforts of dedicated citizens, most notably Carolista Baum, whose activism led to the creation of the state park, ensuring the protection of this iconic landscape for generations to come. And whereas Jacque's Ridge State Park provides invaluable recreational, environmental, and economic benefits to Nagshead, attracting over one million visitors annually who enjoy its scenic beauty, outdoor activities, and educational opportunities. And whereas the Friends of Jacque's Ridge, a nonprofit organization dedicated to the park's preservation and enhancement, has played a vital role in supporting the park's programs, improvements, and community engagement efforts. And whereas from June five through eight, two thousand twenty-five, Jacque's Ridge State Park and the Friends of Jacque's Ridge will host a fiftieth anniversary celebration featuring a historic lineup of events, including the Outer Banks' first-ever drone light show, a live concert on the dunes, a sunset toast and flag-raising ceremony, and the interactive, family-friendly activities, all designed to honor the park's legacy and importance to the community. And whereas the town of Nagshead recognizes and appreciates the significance of Jacque's Ridge State Park as a cornerstone of the town's natural heritage, economy, and identity, and wishes to express its full support for the fiftieth anniversary celebration, now therefore be it resolved that the Nagshead Board of Commissioners formally recognizes and honors the fiftieth anniversary of Jacque's Ridge State Park and commends the efforts of the Friends of Jacque's Ridge and the park staff for their dedication to preserving and celebrating this cherished national treasure. Be it further resolved that the town of Nagshead encourages residents and visitors alike to participate in the fiftieth anniversary celebration event and join in commemorating the history, beauty, and significance of Jacque's Ridge State Park, adopted the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-five. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
I would like to make that motion.
I bet you would. Thank you very much. And I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this to the board on behalf of the Friends. This is an opportunity to say that at last week's CRC meeting in Manio... former Mayor Muller and I were two of the speakers who supported the effort to restore protections back to Jockeys Ridge. We are, we are hopeful of that after all this time. And nonetheless, we look forward to celebrating it. I learned a little bit about some of the detailed plans yesterday. Sounds like it's going to be a one-of-a-kind event and very exciting. We certainly commend that to our citizens and their, and our visitors. Thank you, sir. That brings us also to a discussion of legislative correspondence and the opposition to House Bill 765 and similar legislation. So as it has done over the past several years, the legislature is attempting to strip authority from municipalities. And this year, there is a particularly aggressive effort, a well-supported and well-funded effort to push back on a number of authorities that towns have and to impose statewide standards for density, for example, which makes nobody happy. I am on the mayor's listserv and I will tell you that towns all over the state of North Carolina have been writing letters and passing resolutions. The league has been active in asking its members to, to reach out to the legislature. So at the mayor's luncheon in April, there was discussion both about going to Raleigh as a group, but also corresponding with the legislature as a group. And we believe that that amplifies our voice if we do that together, I think. And, and I'll speak to that in just a moment. So I talked to Andy after that meeting. Ms. Christensen at Warden Smith, we talked a little bit about this. And I think I put the first draft down on paper and then Andy, Andy wrote a letter, I think a somewhat better version. And we had input from our Warden Smith folks. We had input from the, from the mayors. And we generated this letter, which we submitted to, not just to our own delegation, but also to the legislature at large with copies hand-delivered to the important folks like the Judicial Committee on the day that they were considering this. Every member of the committee the night before received a, a hard copy of this letter put in their hands. And so we've made a significant effort. And I will say that some of the feedback that we've gotten, Senator Sanderson's legislative aide in particular said, you know, you see that letter with all those, with all those logos crossed out? That's, that's all those folks speaking with one voice. That's a, that's a pretty impressive document. And it does, it does make an impression. And so there have continued to be, and, and of all the years, for the town of Nags Head to hire somebody like Warden Smith, this has turned out to be a great year for that because we have, we have ears on the ground there. We have folks who can convey this message on our behalf, not just for the town of Nags Head, but on behalf of all of us. And, and they've been really great to work with, you know. You know your folks are on the ground when you're talking to them on the phone in the, in the legislature. And Bobby Hannig walks by and they grab him, they collar him, and, and we get him on the phone and get to talk about this. And so we, I believe are doing what we can. We do have set up Monday a virtual meeting with these local mayors with House Bill 765 sponsors, Zinger, Brody, and Winslow. So we got three of the four primary sponsors. We will be meeting with them on Monday with as many of the mayors as we can get on, on a call. And that's a, that's good. The fact that we are getting this opportunity to talk directly to them and take our argument to them, I think is, is significant. We, we think maybe there's a, there's a lot of support up there, but it's, it's, it's a tough bill and it's, it's, it's being opposed fairly vigorously by some members of the legislature. Then on the 29th of May, we have an in-person meeting at the legislature. So this Thursday is crossover day. So this bill will presumably make it through the floor on the House and will go over to the Senate. And so the fight on this particular bill will move to the Senate. And we do, we know that we have Senator Hannig's support. He does not like this bill. He's told us so. We have a meeting on the 29th in person in Raleigh, again with as many mayors and council members as substitutes for any mayors who can't go, with Senator Alexander and Senator Ford. And Ford is the Republican Joint Caucus Leader on the Senate side. And so we will have a significant opportunity to carry our message to them and, and oppose this bill. One of them unfortunately is, is a sponsor of a bill on the Senate side that would basically take the, the downzoning and make it law and keep it law. And so we'll get the opportunity to, to take our argument against that. Also, I've stayed in contact with County Chair Woodard. They are going to the legislature next week for about two days worth of meetings on this and other topics. They will carry our message and I promise that we would note that the county was on board when we carried our message in opposing these, these efforts. So I just wanted to update everybody on what had been happening and what we were doing and, and, you know, the, the efforts we continue to hope to make. Andy, would you add anything to, to any of that?
No, I, I think that, you know, the mayor, I talked about this yesterday. We're, we're planning a call this week to prep for the meeting on Monday. You know, one of the things that I think we're going to hear is, well, what are your suggestions for, you know, fixing our housing problem in the state?
Right.
You know, one of the things we've heard previously was opposition without solutions is meaningless. I think the timing of when you engage people in those discussions is important. And you certainly can't do it after a bill's already being considered, you know. I mean, I don't know if they would actually consider putting together a group to, to talk about these things productively, constructively early on. And the only other thing I'll say is that in this letter, you know, obviously Bill 765 was a big topic. We also addressed a lot of other land use related bills. And so I just wanted to, to point that out. And there was an article in the Outer Banks Voice. They published the letter. But, you know, we, we were sort of opposing a lot of these attempts to strip our authority. And I just wanted to mention the other items that were in the list.
Yep. And, and you know, we tell them, you know, that there's a way to do this without imposing on towns like ours that don't have sewer systems, for example, and where higher density is really difficult to manage, potentially damaging to the groundwater. I think the fact that we are engaged through Commissioner Sears and, and the town manager in an effort to find a way to, to build housing in the community, the fact that we're building housing to house our own lifeguards, I mean, there are mechanisms, you know, that we can use that aren't an imposition of density from, from the state. When we got the, when the invitation was sent around for the, for this meeting coming up on Monday with the bill sponsors, one of the mayors said, gee, Ben, I hope we're not going into the lions den. And my response was, I hope we are going in the lions den because that's where the lions are. And that's, that's the only, only way you can find them. So, so we'll see how it goes and I will let you know. Any questions?
No questions. I just would like to thank your efforts again, Mayor, and the other mayors. And also thank our lobbyists again. You're right, it's, but what's coming out from legislation is very frightening. And we couldn't have picked a better time to have our lobbyists engaged. And I'm very thankful to our town manager for initiating that.
Yep. On a couple of other topics, I do hope to be at the Beaches Inlets and Waterways Association tomorrow and Friday. There will be a presentation, Dave Howick is giving a presentation on threatened coastal structures. And our own town engineer, David Ryan, is giving a presentation on dune infiltration. I think that's Friday on, on dune infiltration for stormwater systems. So we're, you know, the town of Nags Head continues to engage in a, in a larger way. And Tuesday, a group, the offshore oil topic is coming up again. The federal government is receiving comments on, on offshore drilling leases again. So Friday morning, I will meet with some of the local folks who were opposed to offshore oil. And then I had a previously scheduled meeting with Congressman Murphy. He will be in his office here locally. And so I will be meeting with him on Tuesday with some Oceana folks to repeat our message. He's been receptive in the past to our message. And, and his, his response is always, if we don't need it, if we don't need the oil, then I don't see the point. And so hopefully he, he still feels the same. I think that's it for me. That brings us to closed sessions. We had published a request for a closed session on personnel matter. We're going to defer that until next month. And so I would move that we go into closed session to confer on a matter of attorney-client privilege and preserve that privilege regarding 309 West Soundside Road, BOA appeal pursuant to general statute 143-318.11a3, to consider applications for the Nags Head Lightkeeper and Nags Header awards pursuant to general statute 143-318.11a2. Does that cover everything that we might hear?
And also to discuss the Cherry Inc. litigation and other matters protected by the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. So with John's amendment, that would be my motion. Is there a second? I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Board will be in closed session. All right, board will be in closed session.
Yes, sir. The board did consider and take action regarding the lifekeeper and NAGs header awards, but no other actions were taken.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board? In which case, hearing none, then a motion to recess to the fiscal year '25-'26 budget workshop on May 21st at 9:00 a.m. would be in order. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. I assume there were...